Order this planning board meeting today, November 7th. Our fearless leader Dylan is absent. My name is Michael Bonifant. I'll be the chair of the meeting tonight. We have all other members present with Bob being remote, so we'll go by roll call. If you're here for the Make Peace Road public hearing item, that has been continued without discussion until the 21st of November. Joe, anything from staff?
No, nothing here.
Mr. Morissette?
No, sir.
Anybody on the board, anything?
Nope.
Anybody in the audience have anything for public comment? Seeing none, we'll jump right in. We've got the 81 Nutting Road, PB 2220 preliminary subdivision.
Wait a minute.
We should have a vote.
We need to continue this.
Oh, we need to continue, thank you. Is there a motion to continue, PB 2201, five Make Peace Road?
So move to November 21, 2022 here at Town Hall, starting at 7:00 P.M.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye, thank you. Now on to general business, PB 2220, preliminary subdivision 81 Nutting Road. And this is for, we have a draft decision.
Yeah.
And there we have an update on this, Joe?
The applicant has reviewed it. They are fine with the draft that is before you. So they had a prior scheduling conflict, but they felt comfortable given that they had a chance to review it and were comfortable with the language that goes before you this evening.
All right, so anybody, this is still an open public hearing, correct?
No.
Anybody in the audience have anything to discuss on this preliminary subdivision 81 Nutting Road? The board had any further comment?
No.
No, but the comments captured our discussion, so it seemed good to me.
So do we move to close the public hearing?
It's not really a public hearing.
It's not really a public hearing.
Okay.
It's a discussion.
All right. So then do we, seeing no objection and approval of our draft notes, do we want to vote to approve or have a motion to vote to approve on this? Want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the preliminary subdivision plan submitted under section 218-10 of subdivision rules and regulations, proposing two lots of subdivision at 81 Nutting Road, and we approve the decision as provided in the packet.
Second. All right, all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Question, how do I get to the?
All right, so you've got to go to the town website and download the meeting packet. All right, next we have PB 2134, Providence Roads, lots 2 and 3, now H.R. Adams Way, after the fact storm water management permit applicant in accordance with chapter 147 of the town of Westford general bylaws.
Good evening, Mark Slager from Allen Engineering, here on behalf of Ray Adams. I believe Mr. Adams is here too, not Ray, but uncle.
David Adams, trustee of the Adams family, trust, current owner of the property.
You may recall, we went through a common driveway special permit, and at the time we had just one, under one acre of clearing. The limit of clearing was flagged in the field, and for whatever reason, the tree clearer went a little bit beyond what was needed, and as a result, there is greater than one acre of land disturbance that will be required.
Now, if you recall, we did ask about the trade, whether you needed this at that time or not.
Correct, yeah, and we were just barely under the one acre, and that's why I went out there and did a detailed flagging of the area that was supposed to be cleared, just to make sure. And I don't know, I wasn't there when the tree clearer was there, but I think he used a little bit of poetic license or whatever. In any event, we are over the one acre and thus need a stormwater management permit. Submitted the stormwater pollution prevention plan, which included the long-term maintenance, and also a stormwater management report with drainage calculations. Some of the upgrades include roof drain systems, and elongated stone trench for infiltration, and then a couple of little shallow basins for infiltration as well, just to prevent everything from going directly down into the wetland area. I have not heard back from engineering on their review of the stormwater management calculations as of yet.
Ask Joe, do we have anything from engineering?
They haven't had a chance to review it yet, as you can imagine this time of year, and Mr. Guthrie's project's keeping them busy for sure, that they would need some additional time to review it. Not that, you know, I don't think there'd be anything major that'd come out of it, given that the project has gone through the common driveway special clearing process before, but they do need some additional time.
I guess I'll go to the board. Bob, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Kate?
No, I mean, it all looked good. I was just curious where the, where they cut down too many trees, was it just in general or in a certain location?
It was actually right off the end of the roadway. There was supposed to be a stand of trees there, and then just a little bit outside some of the other areas. It was really hard to pinpoint exactly where, but there was a fairly sized area. In fact, if you look at the septic system on lot 3, way up on the top, you'll notice there's a fairly sizable opening to the right of that. I don't know how they missed the flags that were there, but they did. One of the other items that came up was the paving. When it, when they do apply for the building permits, they would like to pave just the center strip and not the two side driveways. Obviously, those would get pretty beat up during the construction of the foundations and whatnot, but if they put in just the strip, I think that would certainly satisfy everybody's requirements.
That's it?
And also, I'd just like to make a comment on the?
Do you want to just?
You need to come up to the mic.
As a learner, I'd just like to make a comment on the, on the construction of the two driveways, on really the, the final grading of them is dependent on the, on the construction of the two houses, to get everything to properly align in the vertical grade. And so it really makes sense to, to not pave those areas until the actual floor elevations of the houses are established, so that they can be, all the grading can be brought into alignment.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know if that, they can issue the building permit, they'll have to discuss that with the permitting without the driveways or the road being put in, that's, you know, out of our purview, something to discuss with them. Other than that, let's.
No, so Mark, is that tree line that's shown here, is this now after all the cutting, or is that the one that was on the plan before?
It's a combination of both. That's what's going to be needed to clear. It doesn't, it doesn't show all of the existing clearing. There might be a little bit more, like behind the house number on lot 3, there might be a little more needed there. I think it covers pretty much everything. Also, the, you'll see right at the intersection of the driveways on the right-hand side, right where the cursor is now, right in there, I think there's a little more clearing that's going to be needed in there to accommodate the infiltration basin that's proposed in that location.
Bob, that's a triangular detention?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically just a grassed area that's going to collect water and let it infiltrate into the ground.
Yeah, so below the T where the two driveways are.
Anything else?
Okay, so if you, if you're proposing then to pave the centerpiece right now, right?
Yeah, we'd like to do that before we start the house construction.
Okay, so that, but that, the stormwater management plan takes that into account, so meaning if you don't pave the driveways, is that going to make the stormwater management plan not operate effectively?
No, I mean, the stormwater management plan anticipates the driveway being paved. In fact, I would recommend that because it could get pretty muddy, especially next spring. I don't know how much they're going to be able to get done this winter, but next spring when it's muddy, it's nice to have a good paved area to work around with.
So what, the driveways, will they then be paved in the spring, you think, or before?
Yeah, they'll get paved after most of the house construction is done, because especially the house on the right is going to be a decent amount of fill coming in to raise the grade to get into the garage, so they'll have to grade that out, and probably not going to happen this winter unless we have a really mild winter, but that's what I would anticipate.
Okay.
I believe they just want to get the foundations in for now and get the center strip, that'll give them all winter to button up the houses and get a lot of that construction done.
Okay.
So, let me ask staff, if our next meeting, we have to continue this because engineering hasn't looked at it to the 21st, are you going to be able to put the driveway, the road in before then?
We would like to, but I don't know of any prohibition that would.
Well, if you need a stormwater management permit.
There's a November 15 deadline, but that doesn't apply to a common driveway, that's only subdivision roads.
Okay.
At that point, it's more a matter of when the asphalt plants close down, but they usually have something open throughout the year for emergencies.
Okay. Well, I suppose if engineering and building department doesn't have an issue with not putting the driveways in, then I certainly don't. All right. All right, so unless there's anything else, continue this to the 21st, does that work for staff? Do you know if engineering's good with that?
Either the 21st or December 5th, they were fine with either one, whatever.
Slager?
I'm sure they'd rather have the 21st.
Yeah, I was aiming for that, for some reason, there's revisions need to be made, more time, then.
Yep.
Yeah, if we have to extend it. I would go for the 21st.
Want to make a motion?
Sure.
Can we just get clarification on one thing? So unless engineering department has an objection, you do not have an objection to them doing the main paving for, say, binder for the main entrance?
Do you want to vote on that?
Well, we just want, as long as we're clear.
Yeah, it's just so we can tell the building department that.
Bob, you want to weigh in on that?
I'm willing to weigh, but obviously for the engineering, but the one question I have now, is this raises for me the question of, is there any kind of prohibition in terms of additional tree clearing by the, the future buyers of these properties, future owners? Because we're doing a calculation based upon the current topography with 1.2 acres of cleared land, and it just concerns me that there's potential looking at this for a lot more clearing to take place, and I just want to make sure that the prohibitions are in place to prevent that.
Yeah, the, in any event, they would have to come back to modify the stormwater management permit, but these houses aren't going to be, they're not being built by a developer that's going to offer them to sale, they're being sold to the family members, Ray and his brother, Ray Adams and his brother are going to be living in these houses, and they've reviewed the limit of clearing, and this is, this is all they want. They don't want to have big backyards, they don't want to have, you know, a lot of lawn to take care of, so that's pretty much it.
That's right.
I understand that, but in 10 years, this, one of these, or both these houses could be sold to non-tenant members, and I just want to understand what's in place to prevent future modifications that would significantly alter the clearing.
Well, at that point, the site would be completely stabilized, so any new clearing would be subject to one acre of additional clearing, because once the, once the site is stabilized from a EPA construction general permit standpoint, the site gets closed out, so that it's not a permanent one acre disturbance for the life of the property. It's one acre of working area until it gets completely stabilized and the project gets closed out. So after that happens, they can go back in and clear as much as they want, as long as it doesn't exceed an acre. If it exceeds an acre, they need another stormwater management permit, or whatever the regulations are at that particular time.
And in this case, because it's two lots, that would be up to two acres.
I'm sorry, I missed.
What was that, Bob?
So he said if, since there's two lots, two acres that are being covered now, would have to be two acres to trigger another permit, but I don't think so, Bob, just.
It would have to be one acre total. At that point, it would be one acre per lot, because of the individual owners.
One acre per lot or one acre total?
Per lot.
Per lot.
Well, unless it's, unless it's on both lots, then it's total.
Yeah.
I think that's an issue that.
But, but does staff concur with, with his interpretation of this?
I believe, right now, it is subject to a stormwater management permit because it's greater than an acre of disturbance. Once the project achieves full long-term stability, I do agree that it would take another acre of disturbance to trigger the need for a stormwater management permit or to amend prior ones, so.
Okay.
Good question, Bob.
Thank you.
Just if I can ask, Bob, are you in agreement with them allowing them to just pave the center strip?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Okay, Mr. Adams?
I would just want to highlight that, you know, our, our issue on this right now, from the point of view of the, you know, you're talking a, a continuance, our issue right, our real issue right now is getting the building permits to, to get the foundations that started, and this issue of the driveway pavement is, is holding up the building department from issuing the building permits. I believe it's the last straw to get the, the building permits issued and get the, the actual house, house construction started, so that everything can be finished as soon as, as weather allows in the, in the spring.
Appreciate that. Fortunately, we can't act until we've had engineering comment on it.
And so just along those lines, maybe before engineering begins their review, you said there may be differences in the proposed limit of work? You said you might need to do more clearing?
No, this plan reflects the total amount of clearing that's going to be required.
Okay, so what is shown here is what engineering needs to do, there's no changes.
Correct.
My misunderstanding, sorry.
And just for clarification to Mr. Adams, I believe the building commissioner cannot issue a building permit until the stormwater management permit is issued. So it's, it's not the paving that's holding it up, it's the permit itself.
So he could do the driveway now?
We would like very much to at least be able to get the driveway in, although I'm sure he's anxious to get the foundations in, which would require the building permit, but I don't see that happening until after engineering reviews and the permit's issued.
I'd agree with that. So as a board, we're in agreement that, so engineering doesn't have an issue, they can just pave, just to be clear on that, center strip. Kate?
I'm okay with them paving the center.
Yeah, I'm as well.
As long as engineering doesn't oppose it.
Great. All right, so then your motion.
So I would move that we continue PB 2134 to the November 21st meeting to get the benefit of engineering review before we make a decision.
Say a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, our next item is a request planning board to support the allocation of the remaining Summer Village gift fund towards various planning studies, including updating the townwide master plan. Mr. Morissette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have a request, as you've received many in the past, for use of the Summer Village gift fund, and recently, unexpectedly, some monies, unused monies were returned to that fund. So there was, I believe in your packet, there was a memo from the town engineer, and so they did not use some of the funds they intended to for part of a project, so it goes back to the fund for the original intended purpose. And before, many people come out of the woodwork to ask for your consideration, I have to selfishly first ask for the land use department. It's quite clear, based on how budget discussions are going, that we are simply not going to be able to get money for planning studies through the normal budget process, whether this coming year or even probably the subsequent year or even two. So we would appreciate it to have some consideration to earmark these monies for a variety of planning studies. Obviously, if we secure many grants and we only have to contribute some matching cost, there may be unused monies, but even the master plan alone, if we are without benefit of grants, that could potentially use up the entirety of the monies that remain, which is around $109,000. So we're asking to see if this board would take a vote to dedicate those monies to various planning studies. And just, you did mention the master plan, there are a number of things that we are certainly considering. We're also looking at perhaps a Graniteville neighborhood plan, that could help with some of the long-term efforts there. Tied to that could be a feasibility study, there are some limitations on developing there based on septic constraints. We are also, it would be helpful to have some consultant assistance as we work towards the tiered site plan review process. You know, we've talked about commercial recreation, there will be some aftermath from the MVP planning process, we would likely need to make some changes to both subdivision rules and regulations, site plan review, and perhaps even some of the general bylaws. May need to be some consideration to update the scenic way bylaw. And then unless the 110 master plan is folded into the overall comprehensive master plan, there could be some need to update the Route 110 master plan. And then, of course, also, it may be helpful to have some assistance with subdivision rules and regulations once we get the thoughts that we would like. So there's certainly no shortage of planning studies, and we're hopeful that you'll consider this request.
All right. Mr. Guthrie?
Dave Guthrie, this quite honestly could be a suicide pill, but nevertheless, you know, I was the donor of that voluntary contribution for Summer Village, and at the time, it was negotiated that that would be to offset the loss of a recreational use, which was Wyman's Beach. So I understand we need these studies, I certainly support everything Mr. Morissette does, but just sitting here listening to it, you know, I felt I had to say, there are some recreational uses in town that probably could use some of that money. I just would like the board to keep that in mind before they cast their vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie, before you sit down, Jeff, I was going to ask the question myself, because in the past I thought we've always said that these funds were to be earmarked for recreational type uses. I appreciate being on the Rules and Reg sub-working group, I appreciate the need for help, but I thought that these funds were earmarked for a specific purpose, and I unfortunately think these go outside that purpose.
Well, we can certainly pull that up, but as memory serves, there's really, all it takes is a planning board vote, and we're happy to pull up some of the prior uses that you previously voted for, and I suspect many of them did not actually have to do with recreational uses whatsoever, but we can compile a list if you'd like.
I would appreciate that, and before I just carte blanche say, yeah, go for it, you sent me the list this afternoon upon my request, and like 150 for the master plan, it was a real sticker shock, because we spent less than 20 grand the last time we did it, and I would, before I would give an okay, I would really want to know why the heck do we have to spend that much money?
It can certainly be done with less, but we have looked to what other municipalities have done recently, and I think we really need to do a lot of research, and there's a lot of things that are different now. I think we need to think about a lot more types of changes than we might have thought of years ago. Things are, are different, I think, partly because of the pandemic, businesses are changing how they do things. I think we need to make a lot of changes to assist our businesses, and our zoning needs to be a lot more flexible, and right now, it's, it's not. And so I think there's, there's wholesale changes that need to be thought about, and we have a lot of different, as you see, some, some things that would make sense, and some of them, there's a timing issue. Some things, we have to see what unfolds with the multifamily housing, because in my opinion, that would have a huge impact on master planning efforts, and I think it would be reckless to undertake, say, master planning now until some of those huge variables are, are out of the way. Ideally, it'd be nice to tackle them in tandem, but that's just not feasible with resources and timing right now, so.
And it's not required that we do a wholesale update, it can also be an incremental update.
That is true. We've done that for the economic development section. Unfortunately, that was right before the pandemic, so it probably needs already dusting off.
And I know people hate, it's hard to find volunteers for a lot of things, but we had a wonderful group of volunteers the last time that did a lot of the outreach, so like I said, I, number one, I want to make sure that this ties in with what the agreement was for use of the funds, and number two, I would like to understand why the cost has to be that much.
It doesn't have to be. Again, that's looking at other communities, we've pulled some examples. I'm happy to pull the actual information about the vote, and I think you may be surprised at what some of the past uses this fund has been used for, so we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Bob?
No, I have no additional questions, comments.
Yeah, I mean, I can see, looking at the uses we have right here, I mean, there's the track, there's the playground, there's also the, you know, dunstable road, so it's kind of a combination. So I would, I would be in favor of, you know, not saying, okay, if it's $120,000, or whatever it is, not earmarking at all, maybe to reporting, but maybe, maybe have a, have a combination of different things in there to, again, satisfy, and again, if that's one of the original intents, then I'd like to see that money going there too.
Understood. So, does the board want to wait for the additional, or do you have something else?
I do, just an informational question. I, I think it's great that Mr. Morissette's group is bringing the need for these studies. I guess I question, why isn't there funding available for his group, and where has it come from historically? Because obviously, this is going to dry up, right? This is a one-time hit, and it was substantial, but it's, it's going to go away, and then his group is going to be left trying to modernize the town and its bylaws and not have the money to do it. It seems a little short-sighted on the town's standpoint, and I just wonder why.
It's a difficult budget process, for sure. Everyone knows there's a lot of rising costs, it's going to be, I think, a challenging budget season, and I think this is routinely one of those areas that, it doesn't involve someone's job, a warm body, so I think it's one of the first cuts to go.
It's not glamorous enough, but it's terribly important, right? Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Guthrie, I recommend you send an email and letters to the support, the select board and to the town manager saying, you know, this, this area has been short-changed over the last 10 to 15 years.
Not what I'm saying.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
The developer to air his opinion. Tonight, this took a lot of courage for me to speak up, but I did feel like, you know, there were some recreational things that I'm passionate about in town, and I would like to see. I didn't know there was money left, quite honestly, I thought the fund was, had been depleted.
It was mostly gone, it's only because of the return monies.
Well, maybe I'll meet with you offline and give you my thoughts.
And I will, and I will say too, I think, you know, a lot of these things that Jeff is looking to fund are ways that we're, under Jeff's leadership, trying to improve that, you know, process. So maybe for years, that wasn't really at the, at the priority, but I think, over the discussions we've had over the last few years, definitely trying to making things, trying to make things easier and more streamlined and better for applicants and, you know, homeowners and everybody else too, I think that's important. So maybe that's where some of that extra cost comes into.
So let me ask, what, the money that was returned, why was it returned?
I believe it was for a roadway project, and there were some things that were performed, perhaps by the state. and there were some things that were performed, perhaps by the state, and there were some costs that they were expecting to pay and did not have to.
So, this was originally for the Route 40 Dunstable Road intersection?
I believe so.
Right. So, this was earmarked for, other than recreation, to begin with?
It was.
Well, you could see sidewalks or...
Not all of the money. There was still some money in there, but it...
No, no, so 30 went to a playground, 50 went to the track, and it was 100 to go to landscaping costs of the intersection.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Just for some perspective too, I did, after your question, Kate, on the costs, I looked briefly this afternoon, just some other communities. Norfolk did, they put out an RFP for a master plan update in June. Their number was 140,000. New Bedford was in May, theirs was 250,000. Lowell was also in May. They were $450,000. Lynn was looking to do an inclusionary zoning bylaw study. That was for 60,000. Cambridge had a, they were doing a three-year contract for someone to do a variety of zoning projects. That three-year contract was gonna be for $100,000.
The three-year contract for 100,000, I can understand, but I don't know. I don't know. I think, I think consulting's got out of control.
Right? I mean, you're just asking to potentially fund these things, not exactly...
Planning studies, yes.
Right, studies.
Yeah, but he's asking for us to earmark the amount, and I would like to know what it's earmarked for and...
So, part of that is, I can't give you any... It depends, like, we've been applying for a number of grants, and we have gotten some grants, but, so, depending on what we are successful with, we might only have to provide a 10% match. Sometimes we can do in-kind work. Sometimes we have to provide money. So, you know, that could, paying one-tenth versus the full costs, you know, we won't know until grant season's over, so.
I mean, if we find that we have used these funds for things that are way out of the scope of recreation, then you can convince me, fine.
I don't, I'm not convinced that recreation is a requirement, based on...
But, no, but I asked the question, and if you give me the right answer, I, you know, I'm willing to change my opinion and, but, and say that, yeah, in concept, I'm, would be okay, but just to, without a specific project.
Well, I mean, I'm inclined to, in my opinion, to support the allocation. I think if it's prudent, Kate, if you want some more information, we, can we push this to the 21st, Jeff?
Absolutely. We can get you more information by then. I don't wanna hold you up tonight.
But I didn't know if it was a time-sensitive thing for you.
Nope. Another 20, that's not gonna make a difference.
He just wants to make sure nobody else comes to us.
No, I think that's great. As Jeff said, there'll probably be other people coming from out, from under the woodwork. So, it's good that we can address it on the 21st and hopefully get some answers.
Bob?
What's the, I missed the question.
So, my, I'm in support of this, but I think some of the members of our board want some more information. So, I'm suggesting that we push this to the 21st, so some questions can be answered. I'm just looking for your feeling on this.
No, no, I agree. I think, I appreciate Kate's question, and I would like to know the same in terms of what was the original scope for this money? And was it for recreation, for the balance of the funds? And I'm not sure of that myself.
Right, no, so this was for landscaping on an intersection?
Well, no, no, no. The funds, the agreement that the town...
So, there's $100,000 back that was allocated to intersection landscaping?
No, the question is, in the original agreement between Mr. Guthrie and the planning board, was there any language in that agreement that said it had to be for certain uses? Or is it at the discretion of the town or something? That's my question.
Okay.
I can help with that. There is nothing hard and fast. It was the tone of the donation, but certainly not hard and fast. It is at your discretion, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody have anything else on us?
Nope.
All right, so we'll continue this, you want to make a motion?
We don't, oh, we don't need a motion.
So, can you put this on the agenda?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on. PB 1832, 19 Little Road requests for an extension of time to construct a sidewalk along Route 110 to January 7th, 2024.
Yeah, so, this one, they came just about a year ago, looking for an extension of time to get, in order to get mast dot approval and then to construct it. Well, mast dot approval took a little bit longer, but they do have it in hand now. Unfortunately, the time period is what it is, so they like to continue it one year again, so that way they have the whole construction season to do the sidewalk.
Anybody else have anything on this?
Is there any, are there any occupancy permits tied to this or any other outstanding things that, that are, are being held because of the sidewalk?
Nope, not to my knowledge.
So, it's just a matter of signing off that it's completed, and they get all their money back and stuff?
They do have, there is, I believe, credit that is held up.
Okay.
And so, it, there was a deadline on that, and so they asked for that deadline to be extended, which we obviously want the sidewalk.
And I appreciate, even though they're not here, that, all the work that they've done in working, and you as, I assume you as well, in getting the state to see the error of their opinion and...
The outcome will be its own reward.
Yes. And I see many more people using the sidewalks on 110, and this will be a great addition.
All right, Bob, anything on this?
The only question I had, I was left wondering, is when did they actually get the mast dot approval?
I don't have the specific date, but it literally, I think, was approximately three weeks ago.
I, literally what?
Three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago, I think.
That's fine, okay, no, that's all I care, I mean, that's fine. I wanna make sure it wasn't like six months ago.
No, it, no, it wasn't.
And there's no expiration there, right? There's no mast dot permit expiration or something? If it's not done within six months or something?
There may be, but it was just issued, so they, they just need time to get it done through the, in the next construction season. There was not enough reaction time by the time, I mean, they weren't expecting, I guess, they weren't, didn't know if or when the approval was coming, so.
Anything else?
Nope, good.
Want to make a motion?
I move that we approve an extension of time to construct a sidewalk along Route 110 from Tad McRoe to 19 Littleton Road to January 7th, 2024.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay, PB 2102, definitive subdivision 0 and 37, Kyle Al Road. Diane Lane, request to approve Form G, establish performance bond, request to release lots from covenants, lots 1 through lot 8. Joe, you wanna get us started on this?
Sure, so, there's been a little back and forth between Land Tech and Engineering Office. They have agreed to a number. I have the signed Form G right here. So, engineering is satisfied with the latest revisions that are in your packet, the plans, the Form G number. So, they're at satisfaction at this point.
I'll go to the board. Bob? Any questions? Comments, concerns? Was that no?
No, I've no, no.
Kate?
Can you explain why we had the two tri-party agreements in the pack? Is that just a boo...
Yeah, essentially, I didn't realize that Land Tech had attached it to their correspondence, so.
And, and there was in, in there, on the bottom paragraph on the first page, it mentioned undispersed mortgage funds cannot be less than 600,382. And I didn't, just trying to figure, is that based on the Form G? Or how was that number derived?
Dave Guthrie, that was the original, Matt Watteman's original Form G estimate upon review and feedback from the town engineer. That number came down to 463. So, that's just an old one. That, which document in front of you was a document that was circulated between town council and our council and the bank, so that everybody was on board with that particular form. The numbers are not accurate, but the form itself is. I think it was derived by town council and had to be approved by our bank, because we're going to go with the tri-party bond system here. So, it's less about the numbers in there. Kate?
But since it says it has to be more, it can't be lessened, do we have to change the number?
So, what I would respectfully suggest is, we do have a Form G that's blessed by the engineering department. So, I would recommend, if you're satisfied, you can certainly first approve the Form G that sets the amount, and then you can authorize the tri-party agreement just noting the, with the amount to be revised to match the value on the Form G. And then we'll get the revised paperwork in, and then it can be signed off then.
And my last question...
I mean, it actually went down.
I know, I'm impressed.
I'm like, engineering reviewed it, and the amount dropped. So, so it's not, that's not the problem. It's just, it would be a shame to, you know, delay something a few weeks for the sake of lesser required amounts.
And they're releasing the lots from the covenant? Which covenant? The one that we're...
There should already be a covenant established. So, there, so, there is a covenant that prevents the lots from being released for building, right? And so, the Form G sets the amount. And then if you approve the tri-party agreement with an amount to match that which is reflected on the Form G, you then can vote to release the lots, subject to, we would first have to make sure that everything else is recorded, fully executed and recorded. And so, then that way, then we can authorize the release of those lots, and then they can record that and build.
All righty. So, I just...
There's a lot of steps.
Okay.
Good, good?
Yeah.
I'm good with it as well. Someone wanna make a motion first? On, you wanna do one motion for each, Jeff?
That would be awesome, sir.
Okay, so, motion on the Form G?
I move we approve the Form G for the amount that was within, in our packet. I don't have it up.
I think it's 200...
No, 400 and...
Yep.
No, how much?
Yeah, should be.
Well, there were two forms. One had a higher number than the, and that one was like work already done, so.
If I may, one is, one is to, you run the gamut on the Form G of, as if nothing is done, to establish the baseline 15% retainage until town acceptance. That's the $200,000 number in that Form G. The other one is reflective of the work in place and the remainder of work in place, plus your multipliers, and that's the 463 number.
Okay, so, we would be, so, I move that we approve the Form G for the grand total number, 463, 463,157 dollars and 20 cents.
Second.
We all agree on that number?
Yep. All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Motion on establish the performance bond?
I move that we agree, that we approve the tri-party agreement with an amendment to change the amount from the amount in it to 463,157 dollars and 20 cents.
As discussed here this evening.
Being the value listed in the Form G.
Being the value of the Form G.
All those, second?
Second.
All those in favor, Bob? Bob?
I'm sorry, aye, aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. And lastly, the request to release lots from covenants, lots 1 through lot 8.
I move that we approve the request to release the lots, 1 through lot 8, from the covenant pen, upon revision of the tri-party agreement and, and, what's the word?
Recording.
Recording of all required documents.
Second. All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, moving right along, we have PB 2133, definitive subdivision stormwater management, 22 Griffin Road, Cloverleaf Fields, request to support a modification to the layout of the trail easement on Lot 5 to accommodate proposed waterline easement to Old Lowell Road. Joe?
So, hopefully, this is a fairly straightforward ask. You have a letter of support from the water department as well. We have a trail easement that was executed, it's reported. But, you know, given, point that was brought up, I believe Chauncey Chu a couple meetings ago, there was discussion about providing this water easement in the past, and it was something that just was never followed up on, didn't find its way into any of the decisions or whatever. I think because, at the time, the developer found it wasn't going to be feasible to extend the wa, extend the waterline at that time. But, that being said, they were still willing to grant the easement, so that's what you have on this sketch plan here. So, there's a small area, kind of in this dotted line, where the existing easement was. So, now it would be shifted a little bit further away from the house, and it would kind of overlap with the waterline easement to this more, I guess, space fro, from the easement area, shifting it away further from the house. So, that would, that would be the proposed change in that section right there, aside from extending the waterline easement.
Out to, out to Old Lowell Road.
All right. Any questions, Bob?
No questions, that explained it, thank you.
Kate?
No questions. I thank the developer for willing to go back after the fact and generate this additional easement that's not right on top of the trail easement.
Agreed. I'm all set, thank you. All right. So, we need to vote on this. All those in favor? Oh, you're gonna make a motion, I can't make a motion.
Yes, it's a, it's a recommendation, really, because I think the select board has already...
They've already approved it.
There is an executed easement, but, they look for your recommendation.
All right, so I will make a motion to, I move that we support a modification to the layout of the trail easement on Lot 5, 22 Griffin Road, Cloverfield, Cloverleaf Fields, to accommodate a proposed waterline easement to Old Lowell Road.
Second.
Thanks.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I will abstain. All right, review the minutes. We have two sets of minutes this week. Can someone move that...
We have the meeting dead dates and deadlines.
Oh, did I skip that?
Yep.
My goodness. Oh, I'm jumping way ahead, look at that. All right, meeting dates and deadlines.
There are a few items highlighted on here. The one item highlighted in yellow is the fourth Monday in October, because special town meeting usually happens on the third Monday of October. So, we've kind of already taken liberty, in a way, to shift that date to the fourth Monday. Then the items in green, and then green, and also the word Tuesday in red, are all Tuesdays as opposed to Mondays, because of holidays. If there are any that the board feels like need, we could certainly remove them now, because you could always schedule a special meeting if you had a heavy load in front of the board. But otherwise, those are the, those are the dates.
Are you anticipating needing all of those dates because of the, all the work that we, you have to do and present to us for the overlay for the 40R? the overlay for the forty R? I'm just curious, is that, I'm, I'm happy, but, you know, because I've always said we had too few meetings, but.
Well, I think something like that, since it wouldn't not, for most of it, be a public hearing. You have a lot of freedom to schedule it when it makes sense without having to commit to a date in advance, that may or may not work, so.
And, and on October twenty-three, when I was the chair, I had sent a letter to the select board saying, hey, we always, are always the ones. And my impression was that they were now kind of alternating. And since we got, we got moved this year, then it's somebody else's turn to get moved next year.
We can always ask if they are amenable to that.
Maybe, maybe the current chair can send a reminder to the select board about this.
Perhaps you'd like to email her that suggestion.
So is that more Tuesdays than we have typically had?
Yes, I mean.
Sounds like a lot.
Yeah, I mean, this past year, just for perspective, there wasn't a second meeting in February. There also wasn't a second meeting in June.
So my thought would be that we reserve those Tuesdays, I, I, I didn't hear what you said exactly, Joe, but for the scenario that somebody needs to get in. Okay, well, we've got a placeholder, if we need to, we use it, but.
Don't schedule new public hearings?
Yeah, I mean, for the scenario that, you know, somebody had to get in, it's really important, they're being held up, sure, we'll meet, but other than that.
So you want to remove them from the official calendar?
Well, I don't know if they could put a caveat in there, or.
Well, we can still try to reserve, if we can, the, the meeting space.
Yeah.
And then that way, you know, we'll probably keep a separate, different color, like it's, it's an option for either, you know, taking up MBTA stuff, or, you know, just for the A and Rs that come in, or if people have.
I mean, if we need them, great, but if we don't need them, you know, just somebody's lazy and well, I'll just pick that Tuesday, well, you know.
But, but then they have to be taken off of this calendar because this goes to applicants.
That's right.
And if it's on this calendar, then they have the right.
They have the right to.
To expect the meeting to be there.
Yep.
Asterisk, get and say only if it's important.
Yeah.
No, or with, with, you know, the chair's approval.
I, I think we wouldn't, we simply wouldn't.
Just politicize it.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I'm, I'm happy, definitely removing January seventh.
Yes.
And.
You got that, Joe?
January second, twenty twenty-four, you want to remove that one?
Wait, or January third.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I'm on the wrong year, January third, I'm.
Yep, and the second, for the following year.
Yeah, and, um, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with removing the other ones, it's up to the pleasure of the board in general. I, 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 I do have my own personal thing about Oc- October, the second meeting in October.
Bob, thoughts?
No, I have no further.
Are you okay with keeping the October one moved? And are you okay with removing the ones in, highlighted in green from the official schedule?
Yes, I am.
Yep. Removing the green ones?
Or removing the, the January.
Second.
Second.
How about the other?
Tuesdays.
February, April and June.
I don't, I don't mind them, I'm happy to have, leave them on there unless it's, if everybody else is, I'm off, I'm happy with that, too.
Maybe we could always have them just, I think has been mentioned, like kind of penciled into our own calendars.
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I think that's better.
If necessary, I don't want to hold people up, but if.
Yeah, remove them from the official calendar, but if there is.
Tuesdays, they've got hockey meetings and, you know.
So you're happy to, if you don't have to.
Well, I mean, it's just moving something else.
In the winter, yeah. How about the June one?
Well, again, I think if necessary, we can do it, but we got the fifth of June and then, well, so there you go. Right, so June, between June fifth and then July seventeenth.
Yeah, so I, I would kind of keep the one in June, maybe?
I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Keep the June.
Get rid of the January, the February. And April, that's school vacation week.
Yep. All right.
So keep the June one and, and keep October twenty-three, even though.
Yep, that's what I would agree with.
Even though it's not our turn.
Yeah.
Your team player.
Yeah.
Sometimes. And get rid of January and February in twenty twenty-four.
You okay with that, Bob?
Yeah.
All right. Any else from us on that? All right. Something about MBTA, something next?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Morset.
Thank you, so for those of you, although you folks know, there might be some people in our viewing audience are watching after the fact. New section three A of the zoning act, Massachusetts, chapter forty A, requires that Westford have a zoning district in place by the end of twenty twenty-four that allows multifamily housing as of right. So, meaning that the town would not have the discretion to say no, like you would in, say, a special permit process. So, some of the things about the district, it has to allow for a minimum density of fifteen units per acre. Cannot impose any age restrictions, it has to be suitable for families with children. Just as a reference, though, I did take a look at the two Bell Westford properties. Those appear to be around a density of ten units per acre. So now, Westford has, you know, we don't have sewer. So, you know, we may not ever be able to achieve the fifteen units per acre. And that's fine, zoning just can't be the barrier to that density. So I think other practical constraints will come into play. And for those reasons, though, even though we have a minimum area requirement of fifty acres minimum, I think we're, for practical purposes, we're going to need substantially more than fifty acres to actually serve the purpose because we can't really get the fifteen unit per acre density. So in January, we did a required presentation to the select board as is called out, and then the draft guidelines. And we provided a series of recommendations in a January eighteenth memo. And so there's a lot of information in your packet. And so a lot of that information follows the recommendations, the recommended steps to either maintain interim compliance and get us through at least to submitting an action plan, which is our next deadline. So by the end of January twenty twenty-three, we have to submit an action plan. And so we're looking to come up with an action plan that this board feels comfortable with and that you might be willing to recommend to the select board before it goes to the select board. And so the action plan, it does not bind us into anything. There's no commitment, all the real intention is to show the state and Department of Housing Community Development that we're actually giving this serious thought and consideration and that we have a timeline. So we have an approach that would hit with the town meetings and have an opportunity to achieve compliance before the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four deadline. So even if some, a district, we do have to show a potential district that we submit with the action plan, none of that might make its way into the final version, and that's okay. So that, so I, I don't want anyone to be afraid of what actually gets submitted to the state because that's all going to be changed and shaped by the public hearing processes and just public meetings that'll happen, so it's going to change a lot. So you don't need to worry about that, but I do, we probably went a little, a lot more than we had to for purposes of an action plan, but I thought it made sense to get as much information out there and start by suggesting some things so you can think about where a district may or may not go. We did propose or suggest some criteria that might be useful as we go past the action plan for thinking about what parcels might make sense to include in a district. Obviously, there are some constraints such as you have to have the infrastructure to support it, particularly water. So we reached out to the water department and we did get, that's one of the exhibits, I think, in your packet. Obviously, some places are better able to handle the transportation aspect of it. We thought it would be useful to have a map showing where some of the existing multifamily developments are. And then we also put in there, I think it's a wellhead protection area two, otherwise known sometimes as nitrogen sensitive areas because in some cases, there's a restriction on the number of bedrooms per acre. And so obviously, that would not necessarily be compatible with a multifamily housing zoning district. So you may say, why didn't some properties get included? Well, there could be a reason like, like that. And so that's one of the reasons that we might be looking at feasibility for what, how can we deal with septic in some areas? You know, and that might be part of a, a different planning study. So, so we have a lot of information in, in the packet, but at the end of the day, we're really hoping to get some high level feedback from you folks. We have the start of a draft district. We did not finish this exercise, I think we got about two thirds through it. There are some other properties that we would like to include. I actually discussed one of them with Bob today, he raised a very good question. So we do have, say, the green areas in this map are some properties that we think warrant special consideration for including in the district. We also have some larger areas outlined in that, I guess, magenta, that we think is worth having a conversation about as well. We're happy to answer any of those questions. We think there may be at least one other hotel that might make sense to think about including. We did not reach out to, we have begun to reach out to some of the potential stakeholders because we didn't want them necessarily seeing something, you know, on a map and they feel out of the loop, so. And we've also been developing an email distribution list. So if there is anyone who is watching this, if you want to be kept up to date on what is going on, we've started an extensive list that includes many of these stakeholders, so you can opt out. But you can continue to receive occasional information as this board, you know, weighs in or if there's an action plan that gets submitted, or when public outreach is going to begin, so they can stay informed if they so choose. And then there's other areas that we just did not get to yet, there could be some areas on Route forty, but we think that's a little more nuanced, we'd have to take a, a deeper dive. And there may be a lot more concern in that area versus, say, Littleton Road. So that's just, we're really looking to get your initial high level thoughts. And then we're going to reach out to many of the other boards and committees with some of the same information and some of the stakeholders. Want to gather those comments, come back to the planning board with enough time to get your blessing and hopeful recommendation on a draft action plan to go to the select board for their earliest meeting in January such that if they have comments, we can still make adjustments before we have to submit before the deadline. So it sounds like we have a lot of time, but we don't. But again, the good news is the action plan doesn't bind us. But I think we already have enough to show that we're giving it serious thought and we'd love to hear what you folks have to say.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
No problem.
Bob, I'll start with you, thoughts, comments?
Yeah, so first off, I really appreciate all the hard work Jeff and the team has done on this. There's certainly a lot of information here and it, it certainly provided me a lot for asking questions. One of the areas I had, I, I had mentioned this to Jeff and Joe earlier today. But one of the things I was looking at here, I guess, they were looking at the survey, I think it's pages two twenty-one and two twenty-two in our packet. But they, they had the, part of the survey was to kind of get community sentiment on what style they were looking for. And certainly from, which ones you don't like, that was easy. But I just, I, I had talked to Jeff, maybe seeing if there's some way of, of depicting something that had a little bit more Westford character in here, because a lot of these were, obviously, that came from other communities. Some of them, you know, I looked at one of them, it kind of looked like English news. I think it was the third one, fourth one down on the left. But nothing in here really struck me as something that was high on Westford character. And somehow I thought we had to maybe try to include some architectural elements that were more representative of, of, of styles and things in town we might want to, to choose. And I do appreciate what Jeff said, we talked about this earlier, about the density, you know, trying to work with, you know, exceeding that, that, that ten lots per acre, it, it could be tough. But, um.
Fifteen.
I would like to give the voters something to, to pick, so that's really the only comment I had. Other than, yeah, I re, I recognize there's a lot of work between now and the deadline.
Great, thank you, Bob, Kate?
Yeah, thank you. There was a, a, the outline of a spreadsheet is, or you had lot, it was kind of blank, it was like at the end.
Yep, so.
Is that what you're working on now?
So what we, and again, some of this is not necessarily intended for you folks to work on yet, but we kind of have a spreadsheet with some various criteria at the top.
Yeah.
That we think make some sense. Joe, I don't know if you can.
Well, I didn't read it all, but I figured you're, you're going to be coming back to us and asking us to fill this in.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we also, you know, so for instance, there could be a lot more criteria that you might want to add and some of these you might not think are important. And then we also, I think we have a column towards the end, some, not all criteria may be of equal importance, so you might want to weigh some of them differently. So we just think it makes sense to have an, an organized approach to show this wasn't just throwing at a dartboard, you know.
I appreciate that.
And so that was sort of a start, we did not want to bias you folks. So we left everything blank so far, but we did provide some bias just in the green shaded areas for those areas that we did get to because some of them, I think, do make a lot of sense. So in some cases, we're trying to take credit for existing multifamily developments, we are allowed to do that. But we also have to show meaningful potential for additional dwelling units. And so where we, we do have some, we, we try to, we don't want to just have just existing, we want to try to pair it up with something else because, and we had very candid conversations with the state. As long as we show meaningful potential, it is okay to include a significant chunk, chunk of existing multifamily development. So one of the logical places to us was sort of a continuation of the two Bell ones. Remember, there was three phases to that overall development originally? You know, that makes some sense there. The Westford Swim and Tennis Club is called out in our master plan and our housing production plan as a possible site for affordable or multifamily development. The regency to us makes some sense from a planning perspective. If you look at its location, there's a lot of walkable opportunities there. It's already a developed site. I know they have had some vacancies as, you know, been going through that industry lately. And, you know, I, I know that some people may not want to think about that, but it also could be an opportunity to help them. It doesn't mean everything gets torn down. If they have a lot of vacant rooms, maybe it also gives them an option to convert a certain number of rooms into actually living units, you know? And then maybe there's some synergy there with, you know, the hotel aspect, you know, I don't know. But I, I do know, I think from a planning perspective, that makes sense with the infrastructure, walkability, access to the highway. And then, as you see, you know, that whole sandwiched land between four ninety-five and, and one ten, that has some value to at least discuss. We have some other green areas there because that's where, let's see, Asian plus, let's see.
Asian noodle?
Bradley ski shop there.
Yeah, so there's a lighted, I mean, there's a controlled intersection there. So, and it's, there's a lot of, I mean, that's the place that has the sort of abandoned foundation in the back, you know? And there's just some, some opportunities there that might make sense. And if you go a little further, towards Littleton, Joe? Town Littleton, sorry. Left. So for instance, Orchard Square, do we think that makes sense? Maybe not necessarily, but you also, there are certain rules for counting the area. So the pockets have to be five acres or more in order to count towards your, your minimum area. So with Orchard Square, there's that property at the corner, the, the automotive that may be, it, it would be large enough. So I know that from my understanding, they have plans to be there a while. But down the road, that could be an opportunity for some multifamily. And then there's some other uses towards, you know, Port Elliott Road when four ninety-five came in. There's some opportunities there. You've got Concord Place on the other side of four ninety-five, that's already existing multifamily development, but you have the old Wolf's Den. And landscaping at the back. You know, that would not have a lot of probably impact, the, the additional land is very limited. But together, you know, that also checks the box and you have some very low use and activity going there now. That could, you know, promote something, but on a very small scale. Before it comes up, the whole twelve North Main. Before it comes up, the whole twelve North Main, that is in a nitrogen sensitive area. So we don't feel it's responsible to necessarily include that at this time until we have a plan to address the septic issues. The other concern we have is, feel that Graniteville might need something more specifically tailored to Graniteville, you know? They have a lot of, a lot of history there and I don't necessarily feel that should be painted with the same brush. But if you folks want to put it in there, that's, that's fine. We, we have been trying to secure grants to do neighborhood plan there unsuccessfully so far. It's probably a good time to mention that we actually did recently secure a grant to help us with this MBTA housing. So we did get a, a grant. It will use up our entire line item though probably for our planning studies, but that's a good use of it. So we're very excited to be able to have the opportunity to work with a consultant on that, so. Because there's a lot to do and, you know, people can take the approach. What's this, what is the least that we can do to check the box, you know, to fulfill the state mandate? I think there's also some opportunities here for Westford. I think there's some chances to promote some positive redevelopment in areas that maybe could use it. We do need more housing. And so I, I don't think we should go into this just with what do we have to do to make it go away. I think we can get some positive things out of this that are good for Westford. So trying to keep an open mind, being positive. And I think we can get a lot out of this, this study and this exercise. But for right now, I'd love to hear more of your comments.
Kate?
So going, piggybacking on Bob's comment about the different styles and such.
Yep.
I think your comment that the Bells is only about.
Ten units per acre.
I think that's a big eye opener that most of us would like low and not high. But to get that fifteen per acre, you have to go high, you know? And otherwise you're basically taking the whole, the whole lot and making it impervious.
So as I mentioned, zoning can't be the barrier, okay? So if they can't get their desired density to fifteen units per acre because of either, if it's wetlands or septic concerns, it's not our problem.
No, but, but that's like three thousand square feet or less per unit if, if, if you did it just single, you know, but if you divide it out. But I, I'm just, that, that, that was an eye opener that while I would like them low, I think the reality is they're going to have to go up. And, and I would appreciate whatever the Westford character is, but if you're going up, that ain't going to be the Westford character.
I don't, I mean, we've got four stories.
Yeah. And they're ugly. I mean, one of them is ugly.
Okay, well, there's some subjectivity there, but I think a useful exercise with benefit of our wonderful consultant once we land them. We do think it would be useful to have, you know, some architectural considerations for sure. I think it would be interesting to find out what is the quote, "Westford" character that you're looking for. And some of that may depend on where it's going. So I don't think it's so simple, but.
I'm a long one-ten. I agree is different than having it in Graniteville. One thing I was disappointed in is their whole section on the affordability. And they were very restrictive and I, I thought it was very unhelpful what they have for what you can and can't do with respect to affordability. And, and my concern is, yeah, we can put in ten or if you, if you can demonstrate why, you can have more than ten, but you have to really, you know, but for, for an affordable part. But then the rest of them can be luxury places like some of the new places that have gone in. And, and there's nothing in here that helps the average person who can't afford a home and needs to, to live in something like this, you know?
I think we have.
I'm disappointed.
No, I, I, I get it. I do think it would be challenging to try to, so it's one thing to perhaps require ten percent of the units to be affordable. I was surprised in the survey, I don't think that was very important to the folks. I mean, it's two hundred and five people. Not all of them even live in Westford. But I think we can impose the ten percent to try to preserve, you know? But there are other things besides qualifying as affordable that are still valuable to Westford. And so maybe there can be some opportunities for trade offs if it doesn't, if it's not at fifty percent or eighty percent AMI. You know, there's still value to having workforce housing. Maybe a greater percentage of those could be workforce housing if there isn't the actual affordable requirement, you know?
If, if there's a way to get that in there.
I think there is.
Because I didn't read that in there and.
I think we have some, but the important thing now, so one of the things that we can put like in the action plan is, you know, affordability, workforce, housing and, and get these concerns in. And so that's the whole point.
If fifteen units per acre, unless it's a thirty story high rise with penthouses, I mean, how much, how, how much could they going to be valued at? How, how big are they going to be, you know?
Well, look at the two on one ten. Those are all, they're like three thousand, no, twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars a month. And they're being, being sold, marketed as luxury. And I know people, they're desperate to, for an apartment and they can't find one. You know, because they only earn like forty, fifty thousand a year.
We're taking notes.
So affordability to me, if we can somehow get it for, like you said, for the workforce, is really critical. And I, I was kind of confused. They said you have to say, okay, we, fifteen per acre. But then if there are sewer or nitrogen loading, no, if there are restrictions like the nitrogen loading, does that mean we can have less than fifteen per, per acre? I was confused on that one.
So that's, in my opinion, in the short term, unless we have a, a solution to specifically address that site's septic issue with some offsite way, I just don't think it's compatible with multifamily.
Well, can, well, any of these that we're proposing, say, we say, okay, fifteen per acre, check the box. But then a guy comes in and builds it and it doesn't have to be fifteen per acre.
It doesn't have to. And honestly, I will be surprised if they can get that, that density. So we also have to look at developable, like what part of the land is actually developable? If there's CR, that doesn't count towards the area. If it's wetland re, you know, same thing. So there, and the other thing, this is part of the, the crazy part. The state, in order to have consistency in the municipalities and they're coming up with a system to evaluate the units, the potential units. So they don't look at, say, Bell Westford and say, you have two hundred and forty units on the site and it counts as two hundred and forty units towards the nine hundred and twenty-four potential that we have to show. They pretend it's a, a blank slate and they use their methodology that you put it in and it will tell you the number of units.
You could put.
That you could put in, even if you have two hundred more units on that site, if they come back with two hundred less, you only get to put in what they, what they say. It could come in higher because, but the point is, we don't have access to that. We don't have access to that yet. It's not available yet. So we can't even tell you.
So this requirement is kind of like a paper thing, like some of our subdivision plans where the, you have where theoretically can goes versus what actually gets built.
Yep. I mean, there could be, there could be some differences. So we don't, we don't have all the information that we need to even tell you how big the district really needs to be.
And, and we can't, we can't get docked or whatever the word is. If we say, yeah, fifteen per acre, but it never gets to fifteen per acre.
It may never. It may, Westford may hit ten or eight.
It's just available. Yeah.
But that's not our problem as long as zoning isn't in the way.
Yep. And then I just had a couple of corrections.
Sure.
Your, your timeline, you had a wrong date. It was just, look, you had something in twenty twenty-four and you had it as twenty twenty-three. You'll find it. And then I know the water main, the water service one was draft, but it is missing some places where there are water mains now.
So to be clear, that isn't just showing where water is. It's showing, we had input from Public Works Director. So it's, it's having water and of a capacity to serve this. So there may be other areas where water service exists, but it may not be at the level needed to support.
Well, like Finebrook neighborhood, I, we all have water, but it wasn't blue on the map.
I understand.
I'm just saying, it's just a comment.
It may not be, this is what they gave us, so I'm going by what our experts.
There wasn't any, there wasn't any legend for the color coding, so. So, okay, so that, those are my comments. So no, I, 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 I agree with the areas that you have outlined. And I know I, I have more questions, but they can come later.
Kate?
Yeah, thank you guys for all the work here. This is a lot, a lot going into this. One thing I would consider if we can is, you know, we had, we talked about mixed use over the years.
Yep.
And if there's going to be something like this, then maybe there's a way to incorporate some of that. So you've got, some of that first level could be retail and restaurants and then you've got, you know, residential above it. So it could be something that's benefit to, to the whole town too.
We think that's a great idea. I'm not sure if it made its way into the draft action plan, but that's one of our, our criteria. So that, this gets a little tricky now because one of the things the district would have to allow then is multiple principal uses of a lot, which is fine. There can't be any special permits though tied to the development. So now we're talking about, we have to, this is one of the challenges is say you take a first floor and you make it commercial. I mean, it'd be great to have a restaurant or coffee place or something, you know, there. But now you have to deal with, okay, how much is multifamily? How much is commercial? You need to make sure obviously that there is enough multifamily to be serving the purpose, you know? Presumably it has to be a, a principal use. And then where do you draw the line and what are you willing to still be permissible by mere site plan review versus special permit? Because it's hard to separate if it's in the building, you know, to say, you need a special permit for that, but not.
Tanning booths, right? Massage power, right?
We have our cards. The yellow, one, two, three.
So that's, that's something that we're being mindful of, because we think it is, I mean, we don't want to, you know, say the town is willing to explore and have a decent sized district. I mean, we don't want it to be an all or nothing, you know? We want it to have flexibility and, you know, give those options, particularly on the ground floors or in the front, you know, near the street, you know, that makes.
But when we were talking about this, what came to my mind was that place in Medford by Wellington. Was it the Landing? I can't remember what it's called, right on the river? And it's all like restaurants and on the first floor and all, you know, residences above it. I mean, it's densely packed, but it serves a great purpose.
I mean, I, I realize you sacrificed some of the density of your residences because you're going to have other uses there. But I think overall it's a mix for a better community.
Now, we can't require a commercial component, but we can incentivize and promote.
I think it's, all right, it's just my thought.
So those are great, a good number of things to add so far for the comments.
And going back to the nitrogen loading, there's no requirement that every single unit has to be for a family, so you, you can have.
Beds rooms per area, not necessarily bedrooms per unit, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, it just doesn't even say how many bedrooms per.
So if there's an acre of land and it's nitrate sensitive, you can't have more than.
Four.
More bedrooms on an acre of land.
Four bedrooms.
Oh, period.
Yep.
Well, unless, even if you have a private wastewater treatment thing, okay. But I was, I was just thinking, there's nothing that says that every unit has to be suitable for a family. So you can have a mix of one bedroom, two bedroom, three.
I believe you can, yes.
So, so that's something to take into consideration.
Yep. So are there some areas, I mean, I know Bob had a very specific one that we are already, we're looking at. But are there some other areas that you would like us to consider? Because we're not going to have a lot of time.
Now, I, I had a question because like you had up by West Ro, West Street there, you had Graniteville Woods and the quarry. Is it, is, if there was something that was a forty B or whatever originally, can that now be in the zone and, and put in additional units?
Well, now, so that's a, so these were added for discussion purposes. So this would be essentially trying to take credit for the Graniteville Woods development. I mean, I don't feel that we really need to do that. I think we have plenty of land on, on one ten to do that. But, you know, we wanted to at least acknowledge this multifamily development here. So I don't believe that they could do that. They would have to actually come in and modify the comprehensive permit. That is what governs that property now, that project. So.
My opinion, I think the one ten areas are the, are the places that is more appropriate.
And, and the west, east, whatever side it is of Route forty, over by where Ace Hardware is and all of that. On the Chelmsford side, what's, whatever direct, is that east?
So.
Yes.
So, I don't know, Joe, can you maybe zoom there so we can?
And I hate to say it, but there are still large parcels that someday will be sold.
There are. So you're saying like where Newport is?
Well, along, along, along the street there.
I mean, I don't know how much, there's the, there's the, the quarry.
Yeah.
And that's, I don't know how much other land there is, right?
The quarry right to where the ace is, right?
Right, the quarry to there and then the rest of it's kind of developed. It's split up with Russell's Way.
So, yeah, we did include also Merrill's Quarry just because obviously it was a subject for, you know, somewhat recent town meeting for.
Senior housing.
And would you want to include like Secopolis or Greenwood's? Those are large parcels.
Parcels over, see, to me, that's right off, off a back road on, you know, Griffin, not a South Griffin Road, what is it? South, what road is that? Lowell, Old Lowell Road. You know, Old Lowell Road, is that what you're talking about?
Well, and twenty-seven, yeah. And Secopolis is up on the north side by Kingsbury.
To me, it's just, I mean, that's, infrastructure's not there for those types of things. I guess if you've got from, from, from twenty-seven, I was thinking that parcels, you know, down by Vos Road and on, on Old Lowell Road.
Sure, the infrastructure wasn't there when Greystone was built.
About like Westward Tech Park up by, you know, where Chili's is and stuff in there, but, you know.
So actually, that's one of the parcels that we were looking at when we spoke with Bob earlier. There is at least one parcel there.
And, and the ones off of Carlisle Road there, you know?
Oh, yeah, we did also.
Who was?
So, right, so does the board want us to at least look at, did you want us to look at Liberty Way? We did include the, the Balsam Circle development and the smaller parcel next to Liberty Way because at this point, we feel as though that small parcel, it's surrounded by Liberty and a. because at this point, we feel as though that small parcel, it's surrounded by Liberty and industrial use. It's got, you know, um.
Is that the kennel?
What's that?
It's the kennel? No.
No. So if you've got the the vet, you've got Balsam Circle, then you have this, um, residential lot in Liberty Way. And it's kind of like, like the last, so we thought together they would, you know, also hit the the five-acre, you know, mark, and that would, you know, create small, very little impact, but could be something for that.
But if Liberty Way, if there aren't any, uh, nitrogen loading concerns.
So there.
Too bad there, then that could be an area, you know, reuse of buildings or tear down and new buildings.
So that might, um, we would have, I believe those properties are governed governed by a condominium association. So I'm not saying documents can't be amended, uh, but I'm just saying, um, you know, we probably would reach out to someone to see.
Okay.
They know off the top of their head, is there anything that restricts or prevents that kind of, sometimes they, if it's an industrial development, sometimes there are restrictions on certain types of use deemed incompatible, so. Um, but that's something we can look at. And you, and, you know, I don't know if we're coming back at your your next meeting, but between now and then, if you have parcels you'd like us to add to the mix for discussing? We don't have a lot of meetings.
How about, it was, I have to read it again more carefully, but it said you can't use public, public parcels, but you can use public parcels, so.
Yep.
So, I don't know.
So any other direction, or we can, I think we've got some good stuff. We'd refine our draft action plan, get in some concerns and points. Focus, I think, more on one-ten, but we can also share some of the other things that we talked about tonight and see.
Yeah, I I liked your, what you had in that draft application. You had some good, uh, comments in there.
Good, thank you. We appreciate it. We're just.
Thank you.
Trying to do all we can with the limited time, you know? So, um, I appreciate your support. Come back with something hopefully refined enough that with a little tweaking at another meeting, you feel good about sending to the select board.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, motion to review the draft minutes, review and approve the draft minutes from September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
It's a moot.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion. Bob, a discussion on the September nineteenth minutes?
Uh, no, nothing.
I watched it on the video. Can somebody explain at the end, lines one eighty-five to one eighty-eight? Was there a glitch, uh, something in the video? Were there?
Yeah, apparently I don't, we was.
Because when I watched the video, I saw you guys voting on the, uh, on the, uh, review types, so I don't know what what the issue was.
Well, did you watch it live or?
No, I watched it on the, on CAD, on the video.
I don't know.
Was an issue with the. Was, but there was a glitch in the video, I guess. Let's take her, informed us.
Oh, maybe it was in her, because they listened to the tapes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Darren?
No comments.
And I have no comments, so. All those in favor approving these minutes as written, say aye, Bob.
Aye.
Kate?
Abstain.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Right, who made the motion?
Me.
Okay. Second, I'm sorry, Mr.
Kate.
Even though I abstained.
Can I get a motion approved, review and approve the minutes for October third, two thousand and twenty-two?
It's a moot.
Second.
Uh, discussion, Bob.
I have none, as I wasn't present.
Okay, Kate?
Nothing.
No comments.
And I have no comment. Uh, all those in favor, say aye, Bob.
Uh, abstain.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. And no correspondents? Is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.